Good evening and welcome to League of Women Voters of Bellingham and Wachem County Forum for candidates for the Blaine City Council. My name is Michael J and I am your moderator for this evening. Uh, the land we stand on or sit on is the traditional ancestral and unceded territory of the Lummi and Nukzak people, the original inhabitants of Washington's northmost coast and southern British Columbia. Please join me in deep gratitude for their ongoing wisdom and guidance as we honor their ancestors and acknowledge the Lummi and Nukzak people as the original inhabitants of this land. Uh, founded in nineteen twenty, the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. Our mission is empowering voters defending democracy. And to that end, we provide candidate forums so that voters can make informed voting decisions. The League never endorses a candidate or a party. Membership is open to both men and women sixteen years and older, and uh, we invite you all to join us. Uh, we say democracy is not a spectator sport, and with that, let's go ahead and get started. So tonight's forum, as I've said, is for the Blaine City Council candidates. There are three ward positions and one at-large position on the ballot this November. Each race has two candidates on the ballot, and I want to introduce each one of them. I will say that some were unable to make it this evening, um, so you're gonna get to see who was able to be here. Um, so for uh, Ward One, we have uh, Eric Lewis, who can wave, there we go, and uh, we have Jiggy Sorrell. Um, and then for Ward Two, we have Isaac Newland.
Hello.
And we have Ray Leon, who's not able to be here. Um, I know that for Ward Three, uh, uh, Sukwon Gill is trying to get in on the call, so we'll see if he joins us, and the other person running for that position is Don Enos. And for the at-large position, we have, uh, again, not here with us this evening, Mike Hill and Sarbi Baines. Uh, the Blaine City Council is comprised of seven council members. There are three wards within the city limits, and each ward is represented by two council members. A seventh council member serves at large. Please check their website, however, as I understand it, the Blaine City Council meets at six P M. on the second and fourth Wednesdays of each month. Um, we will follow now with specific rules for the debate. Uh, there are no openings. You can't challenge me, Eric, right now, sorry.
It's Mondays.
We'll get to that.
It's not Wednesdays.
Oh, it's what, it's uh, Mondays.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So uh, again, the second and fourth Mondays of each month. Um, good catch. Um, so as far as the rules for today's debate, there will be no opening statements, and instead, the introductory question is designed to elicit responses consistent with what we normally would make an opening statement. Candidates will have ninety seconds, one and a half minutes, to respond to each question, and will make a one-minute closing statement at the end of the question period. The order of questions and closing statements is by seat alphabetically. This will be rotated every questions that there are different orders. Um, each candidate has a challenge card. Now you can hold it up. There we go. We have, we have challenge cards here and uh, uh, if they, uh, if somebody uses a challenge card, um, they, uh, to challenge or rebut their opponent's response. After being recognized by me, the moderator, and the challenging candidate will have thirty seconds to state the challenge, and his opponent will have thirty seconds to respond to that challenge. Each candidate may use their challenge card only once during this set. So use it sparingly. Um, today, our timer is Elaine McCracken, um, and you can see the uh, League of Women Voters timer in the upper corner. Um, and the timer background will flash to yellow when there are fifteen seconds left, and then to red when time is out. Um, if necessary, uh, I will ask you to stop talking at that time, and in fact, um, well, could go as far as to mute you if necessary, but I don't think, I think you're all very civil, so thank you. Um, we ask that the candidates be respectful of the time allotted due to the limited time that we have and our desire to include as many questions as possible. So any questions on those rules? All right.
I assume I can't challenge anybody because my opponent is not here.
Uh, you can challenge anybody.
Okay.
Um, so uh, let's see here. Um, so uh, Timer, are you ready, Eileen?
I'm ready.
Perfect. So candidates, um, you'll each have one and a half minutes, ninety seconds to respond to the question. Uh, so the first person who's gonna be responding to the question is gonna be Eric Lewis. Um, so the question I have is, uh, if elected, what issue facing the city of Blaine would be your top priority?
Thank you. Okay, so I think right now, for me, the top issue has to do with communication improvement between the citizens of Blaine, the Blaine City Council, city staff, uh, people of, that have a stake in the city, investors, so, so communication, I'm, I, I have identified really as the, uh, the top issue. We need to be able to get to a place where there's an increased trust. Uh, we need to get to a place of increased practice. We, we, we need to be able to practice, uh, speaking to each other and communicating with each other in a, in an environment, a safe, comfortable environment, uh, with respect and empathy for each other. Uh, so I'm placing that one at the top. I could easily say that the next one is get money, okay? But, and I could, we'll go into the detail on that subject, but it specifically, that is my answer to your question.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for that, Eric. Um, next, let's turn again to uh, to Jiggy now. Um, if elected, what issue facing the city of, of Blaine would be your top priority?
Yeah, I, I believe, um, I, I have to say the same thing on that is, is transparency. More transparency from the government of Blaine to the businesses and the community members, um, throughout Blaine.
Wonderful. Thank you, and I'm gonna turn to you now, Isaac.
All right. Um, I mean, I, I obviously do not disagree. There's a ton of issues that we have that are high priorities. Um, the one I've been thinking of recently and kind of got me into this is, um, like Eric mentioned, money, right? Um, we've got a whole lot of issue right now with Canadian tourism dropping off for the city of Blaine. The city relies a lot on Canadian tourism for donating sales tax, which then leads to paying our, our police officers, paying our, you know, public, uh, public works people. Um, so I think that's kind of a high priority is working with businesses, seeing what the city council can do to get people to shop local, um, bring in businesses that can kind of diversify our revenue, our sales tax revenue, right? But, um, so working on that, I think is very important. Um, and I, I think communication comes with that, right? Like we, as a group of seven people, do not have all the answers, do not have all of the ideas. Um, so we can, while we are working on bringing in new business opportunities, we can work on bringing the public in with, okay, so business owners, we want to communicate better with you. What are your ideas for increasing traffic to your stores? Um, getting people moving here, that sort of thing. And that's, I think that's my highest priority is working on, um, alternate revenue streams from just Canadian tourism.
Great. Thank you so much, Isaac. Let's go to the next question, and this one's gonna go first to you, Isaac. And, and this one is, uh, the city forecasts about a, about a three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar deficit in the general fund, in part because, uh, Canadian cross-border traffic has been reduced and also related to sales tax revenue, uh, reductions. Um, what specific measures would you support to close this budget gap? And do those measures include alternate revenue sources?
Hey, I'm sorry, I obviously was kind of just talking about that. Um, yes, obviously, the, the, the best way to do this would be to have some sort of alternate revenue source that brought in the money to make up that budget. Um, Blaine is a small town. Blaine doesn't have a ton of services that the town provides. So when we talk about a budget shortfall, we're talking about people losing their jobs, right? Like, we've gotta get rid of two police officers, or the people who do the parks work this year don't have jobs anymore because we didn't have it in the budget. Um, that is the last thing I want to have happen. These are our neighbors. These are our friends. Um, so working on any sort of thing, any projects we can do that don't affect people's lives, um, we can, you know, cut those projects and then you save the money that way. If we have some sort of, you know, events that we can throw that bring people in, even just bring Canadians back the way they used to for, for a while, just to, you know, shore up those, those budget resources. Um, this is kind of what I, what I want to push for. Um, obviously, the city of council can only suggest to make policy. We can't force people to show up to Blaine. Um, I don't get to drive down to Seattle and say, hey, my town's amazing. You're coming with me to check it out. Um, yeah, just doing everything we possibly can to encourage more people showing up here, shopping in our stores, buying gas from us, et cetera.
Great. Thank you, Isaac. Let's go now to Jiggy, the same question. Uh, do you want me to read that again?
Yes, please.
The city forecasts about a three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar deficit in the general fund, in part because Canadian cross-border traffic and related sales tax revenue have dropped. What specific measures would you support to close this budget gap? And do those measures include alternate revenue sources?
Yeah, so I know one thing, uh, growth. You know, we, we don't have the growth that we need to be able to, to get the taxes in for our general fund. Uh, partially, uh, property taxes, if, if we develop more uh, with smart strategic growth and development, that'd be, uh, infilling downtown businesses, um, bringing businesses, but also in our tourism corridor. If we can figure out how to bring tourism to our downtown sector, our Drayton Harbor. We have a gem of a place that I believe is just so underutilized. Um, and we've lost a lot of things. We lost our working waterfront that we used to have. Um, working with the port on figuring out how we can bring back, clean up our, our harbor to bring back working waterfront and have fishing boats, uh, you know, home port in, in Blaine. I think that would also, uh, generate a lot of income for our downtown businesses as well as our city. Uh, because where, where is those people gonna live and work? They're gonna be living here. Um, and then just smart development, you know, get, getting that development to where it brings people and, um, projects that are paying taxes.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for that, Jiggy. Uh, Eric, same question for you.
Yeah, okay, so absolutely. When you're faced with a shortfall the way we are, it, the urgency to solve it comes into play, and now we need to be able to take a deep breath and think carefully, do the research. It's like, this is a juggling act. I mean, we've got, uh, it's like, you, you're juggling a bunch of batons, probably more like chainsaws. We, we, or we need to get the money, we need to develop, but we also need to be able to develop, um, carefully, tread carefully, make sure that we're uh, doing all the research that we can do so that, um, our assets are not being, uh, squandered, you know, our marine views and of course, our clean water. We need to, it, so I would recommend that we need to bring people in. We need a draw. We need a draw, and what I've suggested, among other things, is a kind of an arts, like a mini, I've, what I'm calling a mini Granville Island, like they have in Vancouver, with a community theater. Now, this is just one idea. This is one idea that you hear from many citizens. We need to hear from other people, but that's one idea. Bring, uh, create a draw to have customers come in, go to the show, and then go to the businesses. So now you have people going, getting their coffee, going to get their food, and, um, we're be able to increase our sales tax, uh, uh, stream that way. So that's, that's what I would recommend. That's what I would suggest.
Great. Thank you for that, Eric. Um, our next question, um, I'm gonna ask, uh, first, uh, we've had some coming in and out here. I think Sukwon, if you're here. Sukwon, are you in? Okay. Uh, Sukwon, can you hear me? Hello? Um, we've already gone through two questions. You're, you're in the, in the queue for the first one to answer the next question. So, uh, you'll have ninety seconds to do that. The question is, the city has also projected deficits in the utility funds beginning in twenty twenty-seven. How would you propose the city address infrastructure maintenance and utility service funding? So these services remain reliable and affordable? Sukwon, can you, did you hear that?
Yeah, I have weak, weak connection, actually.
Yeah, I can tell your internet is.
Type it in because we, we, internet is disconnecting, you know.
Yeah. Um, let me suggest.
Can I type it in?
No, it won't, uh, it won't work here. I think, um, I'm gonna stop your video and, uh, why don't you go ahead and let's see if that gives you better connectivity on your audio. Sukwon, can you answer the question?
Yeah. Yeah, so can you repeat the question, please?
Um, Eileen, do you want to restart the, the timer for that? The question is.
Can you read the question, please?
Yes. The city also projected deficits in utility funds beginning in twenty twenty-seven. How would you propose the city address infrastructure maintenance and utility service funding so these services remain reliable and affordable? And you're on mute right now.
DX.
Go ahead, Sukwon. I can hear you.
Yeah, I think.
Oh, you're muted again.
We can DX the, uh, East Blaine, so we don't have to serve it.
Can you explain further?
I think that's my short answer.
Okay.
How, how further if?
No, that's fine. Thank you, Sukwon. Um, the next person I'm gonna call on to answer this is, um, uh, uh, I apologize here, just trying to catch up, is Eric. Eric, if you could answer the question, thank you.
Uh, sure. So, um, well, to begin with, there's, we're, we're actually paying some of the lowest, uh, electrical costs right now, utility costs here, and, um, that, uh, we're really, if, there's not gonna be any way for us necessarily to lower it, but to know that we need to just maintain with, uh, the, the maintenance. Uh, recently, down on, on our peace portal, we ensured that the electrical infrastructure underneath the sidewalks was up to date. Uh, you know, so, so keeping these particular assets up to date and maintained will, is obviously the right way to go, but, uh, there's the, the costs that, that the citizens are gonna be paying, there really is not gonna be a way to, to lower those costs. It's just, that's just the way it goes. But just to know, just to have citizens know that, that they are paying some pretty lower, uh, relatively speaking, lower costs than, than other, others in the state.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Let's go to you, Jiggy.
Yeah, so I think with the budget shortfall on utilities, that there, there's not really much we can do on, on lowering the cost, however, um, going through and maintaining the, the older infrastructure first, uh, going back through and, and trying to get that updated, even though that we're looking at a budget shortfall on that. Uh, sometimes maintenance on older things costs more, and so getting that up to date, making sure that it's in, in code and, and, um, uh, and to where we're not having to maintain it as much. So it'd be more so a strategic thing, working with public works to identify, um, bigger key components that need it immediately and kind of forecast, so then we can budget for it and kind of take out the things that we need to now and project what we might need for the future on, on the other things.
Great. Thank you so much, Jiggy, and let's go to you, Isaac.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna agree with Jiggy. Um, I'm obviously not an expert on budgeting for, uh, utility maintenance. Um, so in my, in my brain, if I personally have a budget shortfall, it is, I, I think, okay, well, what in the budget is absolutely necessary? That gets pushed to the top. That has to be done. Um, what is maybe able to be pushed out a couple months, a couple of years? Um, and what are the risks of that, right? So we need to look at everything that we do, um, figure out what is super important, what has to be done, and what the risks are of maybe not doing some of that maintenance that is, you know, comes up every year, but if we don't do it for a year, we save enough money to squeak by, and then we increase the budget from somewhere else, right? We pull like, okay, well, we're spending this budget money on this other project that nobody cares about. Let's cut that, so we have the money next year to do what we need to do. Um, we also have an excellent staff at the city. Um, so pulling in, you know, them to, to kind of give good suggestions on what we can and can't do. Um, and even going farther afield, right, like speaking to council members in other towns, other small towns. If you face this sort of, uh, situation, um, what did you guys do about it? How did it work out for you? So we can kind of have a good idea of what the risks are. Um, and if, I mean, do what we can with what we've got.
Thanks, Isaac. Um, this next question, I'm gonna go to Jiggy first, and the question is, uh, Blaine businesses have been periodically hurt by a reduction in the number of border crossings. What ideas do you have to reduce Blaine's historic reliance on border crossings and encourage economic activity in Blaine that is not dependent on border crossings?
Uh, yeah, since I moved here, it's one of the things that I've, I've wondered for, for a long time why Blaine has only focused primarily on the Canadian tourism as their, their lifeline, I would say. Um, I think that we need to broaden our, our tourism and, and our businesses outwards, looking to, you know, down to Bellingham, Linden, even further down to, you know, La Conner and Anna Cortis and Woodby. Uh, I've talked to a lot of community members and they sit there and, and they go other places for, for staycations. And so I think if we come up with a strategic, strategic plan to kind of figure out what Blaine wants to be known for, and, and how can we achieve that? What makes other, uh, cities around us want to be here, you know? What do we have that they don't have, and why should they come up to us? You know, I, I think all cities have places to eat and, and retail shops. Um, but we have Drayton Harbor. We, we have a great view of Mount Baker. We have, we're really close to the, to the San Juan Islands and, and Canada. And I think we need to refocus our strategy on that and really look elsewhere in, in bringing in tourism and, and other staycations here in Blaine.
Great. Thanks, Jiggy, and let me turn the question now to you, Eric.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. So, um, obviously, this is, and to some extent, an external factor. Canadians are going to do what they're gonna do, and they have reasons for, for either coming or not coming. So among other things, uh, we, as a city, as citizens, as city council, city staff, need to, and it goes back to what I said originally, communication. I would like to imagine that we, as a group, are communicating to Canada. Blaine is ready for you, like we always have been. We are your family, uh, we are friends, we are a place to come. We're an international city. And we, we are a diverse city, and we, so, so, so that's the, the communication side of it. On the other side, there's the draw. Again, I talk about the idea of a draw to Blaine. So it, to get people to come, there should be a draw. I've mentioned various things, as I say, uh, mini Granville Island, arts-type community, et cetera, improving our businesses, improving our draw to Canada and people from, obviously, the south part, uh, south of Blaine as well. So that would be my answer to that.
Thank you, Eric. Let's go to Isaac now.
Okay, um, I've got kind of two separate things. See if I can get him in the ninety seconds. Um, continuing with the tourism, uh, ideas here, um, we do live in an amazing spot, a beautiful spot. People love being here, um, and it's kind of a spooky time of year, right? Like, we just hit October, so, um, I'm thinking about like murder mysteries, that sort of thing. We live in an amazing Pacific Northwest town to host like some sort of murder mystery convention at the, uh, the Semianma Resort, right? Bring people in that they're just here to, to talk about books, but turns out this, there's an amazing town here, too. They can spend their, their tourism dollars. Um, so just kind of an idea I've been tossing around, uh, in my head. Um, obviously, other tourism things, getting input from everybody who lives here, from business owners. What, what draws people is, is amazing. Um, the other side of that, I think, is diversifying, right? Like, we can't, tourism is seasonal. It's, uh, you know, it relies on people having extra money to leave the, where they are and come, come here. Um, so growing enough so that we have businesses here that we want to shop at, right? Like, if my kids need back-to-school clothes, I go to Bellingham. If I could stay here in Blaine, then I'm supporting Blaine, right? So we don't have a lot of kind of local shops that we can go to for everyday things that we need besides groceries, restaurants, that sort of thing. So really diversifying. Hey, tourism isn't up this year, but that's okay, because we've got money coming in from just the businesses we have with people who just live here normally. Um, this is what, how I want to see it go.
Thank you, Isaac. Um, and I just do want to explain that Sukwon has been having some technology issues. I've asked him to turn off the video when he's not speaking, but he's here now. And, um, go ahead, Sukwon. Go ahead and respond to that question.
Yeah. We have a huge impact, uh, since COVID, you know, although on the border, border, in the, all the border towns. So we're talking about Blaine. We want local business to do well and encourage them, encourage more small business to come to Blaine, so we, we can increase the city income. First of all. And we need to welcome back the Canadians, visitors, and the visitors from the U S, U S. We must make everyone welcome to visit and shop here and eat, uh, eat, eat in our restaurants and stay in Blaine. Stay in Blaine, you know, so our, our motel and lodging business, uh, become good, too. And we have big events here, like the Fourth, Fourth of July, and, uh, uh, water rings over, over the water, and then we have other musical, uh, events, uh, uh, few in year, in a year, you know, four, five, I think, uh, we do it here. But I, I recommend another thing, if we can do the multicultural event in Blaine. So that way, we, we invite all, all, all other communities from Canada.
I'm gonna have to ask you to stop now.
From you.
Thank you, Sukwon.
Um, thank you.
Yeah. Uh, let's go to the next question. Um, and, uh, the next question is gonna go first to, uh, Eric. And, uh, that is, the city has asked staff to reduce the budget for its current downtown revitalization efforts. What projects or activities would you prioritize to improve Blaine's downtown?
Yeah, great question. So just to be clear, recently, we had, we were, our finance director told us we were gonna have it go into the red. This, it wasn't really a surprise. But I did manage to be involved, co-sponsor, uh, clawing back half a million or close to half a million dollars to not go into beautification projects, like parklets, for example, but to nevertheless keep the work on the sidewalks, fix the sidewalks, and of course, the electrical infrastructure underneath. So clearly, if, if the infrastructure has to go to the top of the list, uh, and everybody, of course, we want cosmetics, beautification, things that, you know, uh, along those lines. Um, of course, there's, you know, it's, it's getting the money again. It's citing. Um of course, there's, you know, it's it's getting the money again, it's citing light industrial, trying to get. Um places um uh streamlining the permitting process and. You know, having an influx of some money, but at the same time, when you get it. Yeah, well, I will actually uh like to say this, we want to make sure city staff is able to keep their job, so I would actually place that at the top of the list. We've got a great city staff, we want to keep them, we do not want to lay people off. And then after that comes infrastructure, so I would put it that way, that's what um I would prioritize the jobs.
Thank you. I'm turning to you, Jiggy.
Yeah, so I think uh. Keep keeping the infrastructure is key, we we saw it with the downtown revitalization project. Um bringing in key people to understand. What type of infrastructure we have and what needs to be updated, as I stated before, um that's kind of like. This is a need now, and this can wait months or years. Um but I also think some of the beautification and and parklet stuff, you know, we can be reaching out to to private. Uh partnerships and and in the private sector, uh there's a couple of things that I've been working on. Uh trying to get to the city and, you know, there's grants out there for these things, too, I've I've. Seen many of the grants that I've proposed to to apply for, so we can cut those budgets out of what the city's spending. And come up with some private partnerships in some of these beautification projects or park projects. As well as grants that I see out there that are still pending, um that we could be applying for as a city. And I believe that there's there's a lot of money out there that we can be getting in other ways for some of the beautification projects that we're doing.
Great, thanks, Jiggy. Um I'm gonna go to Sakwant now, Sakwant, same question.
Yes, please. Okay, go ahead, please.
Oh, it's the same question, I can read that to you again, it's, the city has asked staff to reduce the budget. For its current downtown revital revitalization efforts. What projects or activities would you prioritize to improve Lanes Downtown?
Actually, we already did the the, you know, the sidewalks wherever was the problem. And the we removed the trees that were hurting the pipes, we replaced with the, we're gonna replace it with the better trees. And we're gonna welcome new building to build.
Okay.
Make sense?
I will, that will be the listeners to decide, thank you for that, Sakwant. Don't let's go, let's go to Isaac, Isaac, same question.
Okay, um I mean, first of all, I think City Council did a great thing, right? They said, okay, we had this project, it's going into. The production, uh but all of a sudden someone says, well, yes, it is, but we actually don't have enough money to pay the bills for this. Uh and so the response was, well, let's look at this and figure out what we don't need to have, right? What is absolutely necessary? What can we do later? Um I think that's a great response, right? Like, infrastructure needs to be done, if we don't do it, bad things are gonna happen, people will be mad about that. Um. Parklets can be put in next year in a different project. Um and like Jiggy said, going outside, right, like Watcombe County Council as opposed to just Blaine City Council. Um Watcombe is is invested in us as well, right? They want, they get money from sales tax, they get money from everywhere. Um so if they're assisting us in beautifying the downtown so that more people come to the county to spend money. Awesome, um so yeah, reaching out to to other places to get income to to cover shortfalls is a great idea. Um. And then re-prioritizing, re-prioritizing things as well, is is was the right choice.
Wonderful, thank you, Isaac. Um our next question um is gonna go to you first, Isaac, and that question is. What strategies should the city use to increase housing options?
Um so already in process, um it's one of the city council meetings I went to is um. We're working on kind of simplifying the buildings to code, um this is a a long-term process, it doesn't happen quickly. Um but the idea being that we want to be able to work with developers and say, hey, we know growth is happening. Um we want to control it and we want to make it work as well for our our city as we possibly can. Um so being able to work with developers, say, hey, we want, you know. You want to put in a hundred houses, awesome, we want ten parks in that neighborhood, that sort of thing. Um I think it's, I think it's like, so we're already kind of working towards that, which is great. Um. I'm sorry, can you ask the question one more time?
Sure, the question is, what strategies should the city use to increase housing options?
Okay, so that's the the first thing, right, is um working with developers so that. You know, we can have them build what they need to build um and diversifying, so. We've got kind of some luxury housing for maybe older people who have gone through their lives, they don't have kids at home anymore. They want to live somewhere nice where they don't have to do yard work, having those options for people, encouraging developers to build those. All the way down to, okay, we've got new families who are coming in who just want to rent an apartment. It's their first job, they don't have a ton of money, so they need somewhere a little bit cheaper to live. Um so encouraging with incentives, however we need to do it, um bringing developers in to build apartments, um lower cost housing as well, so we kind of. Supply everybody who might want to live here in Blaine.
Thank you, Isaac. Sakwant, I'm gonna go to you now with the same question.
So we can do infill by adding small houses behind the houses we have. Which we call ADU, you know, and we we need affordable housing, small affordable, like I have in Linden, you know. That I have one bedroom house. And they pay only nine hundred dollars. So that kind of small, you know, small houses which people can afford, they can live here and they can work here. However, we can do that, we need to do it. Because living is very expensive. People pay like seventeen, eighteen, two two thousand dollars, they can't afford it. A hundred thousand dollars, they will afford it, because they need to buy food too, you know, so we need affordable housing, however we do, however we can do in the city. And city has to work, you know, with the with the builders and all those, you know, and we we can maybe uh. Uh we can make a a permit is process uh permit process easy and fast, so people can do it fast, you know. The permit process should be easy and fast. Yeah.
Wonderful, thank you, and let's go to Eric next.
Right, so. If you ask five experts about this, you might get five different answers, and we need to approach this from many angles at the same time, and. I will just say that if you ask businesses uh or a business owner, they're gonna want. To know that the workers are gonna stay and work and not have to commute from Bellingham, for example. And want to be able to, I guess you could call it workforce housing, you want to be able to build affordable workforce housing. And recognize that's it really needs to be prioritized, and like what Mr. Gill said, having to do with uh, you know, the smart infill. Obviously, part of that could be the answer, you know, with the the ADUs, um maybe permanently affordable housing such as land trusts. And you know, things of that nature, I think, is gonna be able to help out considerably. Obviously, we need to have a variety of housing, including higher cost. Uh more um luxurious uh housing as well, we need a variety, but I'm just saying. Uh the workforce housing needs to be really thought about and accomplished. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Eric. And Jiggy.
Yeah, so I I think that kind of starts with uh, you know, going back to looking at our code, looking at our zoning. Um kind of finding our strategic areas where. Um in our infill in downtown, you know, we we hit on that, we're talking to all the different businesses that I've talked to. Most of them, their workers come from Bellingham, Linden, Everson. Um and so how can we get those individuals working closer? Um and and. John Hopkins class that I took in Columbia University, when I took some some smart innovative. Uh regional zoning, we looked at that, the best practices, you know, making our city more walkable, more bikeable. Um less reliant on on cars and automobiles to get around to and from work. But um so looking at the infill and and seeing how we can put apartments or housing above. Other buildings that are existing and building them that way, but also the ADUs that the state now requires every city in Washington to have. Where are we gonna put those, you know, um it's different size uh certain size lots that are allowed. But does everybody kind of want that? Um and so just putting those into zones where. We don't mind if that happens, and so we can keep our our quaint town.
Wonderful, thank you for that, Jiggy. Um the next one I'm gonna ask first of Sakwant, uh so here's that question. Um many of you have already mentioned the benefits of Drayton Harbor and how to leverage that, but. What should the city do to prepare for the expected rising sea level due to climate change? So Sakwant.
I'll come back in one minute, please.
Okay, I'm gonna go to our next person in the line here, and that is uh Jiggy to you.
Yeah, um currently, I I think pretty much uh there, we have some areas. That we might have to worry about, but uh, you know, keeping our setbacks uh away from the shoreline. Um I think we're right around two hundred uh yards currently on the setback. Um or two hundred feet uh from the setback, but uh, you know. Going back to zoning, right? We we know currently where those might be. And to kind of look at infrastructure on how can we mitigate that from rising uh uh sea levels, right? I know our downtown's pretty pretty well safe on that, but. There's some housing around Semianu that might not be um in the same neighborhood. And uh with us de-annexing, uh trying to de-annex and then annex more land on that side, I know that we have some. Issues right now with uh water coming off on that side, so uh taking into account. Uh is there different uh systems that we can put in place to deal with that? Uh when we are developing new areas and and going forward and. Uh infilling certain areas, looking at that and seeing what we can put in place to protect those.
Thank you, Jiggy, I'm gonna come back to you now, Sakwant, are you able to speak fine now?
Yes, please.
Go ahead and answer that question.
Well, we need to clean the storm water system, we need to keep the storm water syst- we need to keep clean the storm water system. And ensure no failed septic is near the water. Which affect the affair. Affect the affair.
Okay, thank you. Um let's go to the same question, let's go to uh. Sorry about this here, let's go to Eric.
Yeah, look, that's a great question, I I um can say I recently went to a county. Emergency management class, and that, among other questions, had come up, and the. The way to approach this real issue, especially, I mean, here we are, we're a coastal town, so a real issue that we absolutely need to be. Aware of is to look at statistics to go, uh I I think there was a. Uh a a questionnaire or a discussion about, okay, given the probability that such and such would happen at this particular time. How much would you prioritize putting into it? Uh you you know, putting into it at this particular time, I guess I'm not really quite wording the question right. But all the, I think that probably the best thing to understand is, we must. Be prepared for it, we 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 can't act like it's not gonna happen, we really do need to go, yes, this is gonna happen. And that we need to take it seriously, uh. When it happens, I don't know, but it's a matter of of when rather than if, so I think. That's what our city council needs to realize, city staff and the citizens themselves. Um it is a, this is a joint discussion, but a great question, thank you.
Thanks, Eric. And let's go to Isaac, same question, Isaac.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Eric, I think the first step is is acknowledging that, yes, this is going to be a problem, and it might directly affect us. Um we can't stick our head in the sand and be like, yeah, it's gonna be our kids' problems. Um and that kind of leads to planning as well as we can, right? Like, where is our infrastructure right now? Where is our electricity running? Where is our sewer running? Um do we need to start thinking about in the next maintenance phase? Maybe that gets moved, maybe that's farther away. Um when we have the money to do that sort of thing, um and extending from that, when, as we do. Um hopefully, you know, grow grow Blaine a little bit, um. Acknowledging that because of sea changes, because of global warming, whatever is happening. We might be seeing influxes of people who are coming from areas that they just can't live in anymore, right? Like, it's too hot down in Arizona, I'm done with that. I want to live in someplace cool, hey, there's this town Blaine, Washington, it's always cool there. Um so just kind of knowing that we need to have a plan for not just sea level rise, but also. Climate refugees, right? They're coming to our town, do we have a plan for where they're going to live? Um are we, as we grow the town, thinking about refugees coming in, thinking about that sort of thing? Um making sure our infrastructure is set up in such a way that if people come in as we grow just naturally. Is it safe from climate disasters, that sort of thing? Um and maybe just keeping kind of a backlog of money ready for helping people out as they need it. Um and and knowing who to ask for in the county and the state and the federal level to get the help we need to improve infrastructure.
Wonderful. Um this is our last question before we go to our closing statements, so we're gonna start with you, Eric. And the question is, do you think recreational entertainment and shopping opportunities are adequate? For Blaine's growing population, and if not, what do you propose to increase these opportunities?
Yeah, oh, great question, so look, I'll give you a short answer on you, no, no, it's not adequate, um. I I'm not saying that Blaine is not a fun town, okay? Uh I I'm saying that it, we can have improvements, and we've we're right currently having a really great discussion. Uh amongst citizens, having to do with young families needing their kids to be able to have a recreational areas in Blaine. It's a really necessary, really um very good conversation. And really, the answer is, no, we don't, and we need to improve it, so. Uh uh of course, there's a lot of different ideas, and I can tell you that. There's not one bad idea I've heard, it's not a matter of of bad ideas, they're all great ideas, it's just. Right now, we're 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 trying to find out the right place to put the right venue or the right uh recreational place. I've I've course suggested a community theater dedicated to uh theater for for non-students, which they already have their own. Uh but there are uh, th- this is a great conversation that needs to continue, and it's and and uh. And it's gonna involve everybody in this conversation, and um I'm excited about it, I think it's a great conversation.
Thank you. Let me go to you, Isaac, with that same question.
Um yeah, I I kind of break it down as just how my life runs, right? Like, I I've got kids, um and I would like, I I would love if. Blaine was set up in such a way that my kids are going back to school, they need clothes, they need school supplies. I go down to the corner store, I go to wherever it is in Blaine, I buy locally, I'm set, awesome. Um I want to go rent a movie, uh people don't do that anymore. Um I want to go shopping for something that's not just groceries, right? I send my kid on his bike to go do that. Um I, my kids are out of school for the summer, they want to stay in town and go do fun things, right? Let's uh currently ninety percent of the time, I'm like, okay, I will take you down to Bellingham, we'll go. Do whatever it is you want to do, we'll go to Life Force Ninja and we'll climb around on ropes. Uh but there's nothing like that in Blaine, right? So my vision, I guess, is a place where I can, if I want to, do everything I need to do. Um just as a normal, like, living my life. Um not a fast change, obviously, that requires a bigger population and to support those sort of stores, um but I think that's kind of where I want to to lead towards.
Great, thank you, Isaac. Uh Sakwant.
Yes, please. We have enough for for now. But we have no budget to do more right now, so. Uh the library wants to rebuild, you know, and we don't have budget for that. But right now, we need to watch spending, you know. We need to spend wisely, because we don't have enough money. We don't have too much money to do all these things, but we, as we said, we have enough for now.
Great, thank you, and let's go to Jiggy. Great, thank you. And let's go to Jiggy.
Let me repeat the question again.
Absolutely. Uh the question is the question is, do you think recreational entertainment and shopping opportunities are adequate for Blaine's growing population? And if not, what do you propose to increase these opportunities?
So, no, short answer is no. Um we don't have the recreation, we don't have the shopping needed. Uh when I first moved here, I talked to a lot of residents, and there used to be quite a bit here in Blaine that um over time has just dwindled away. Um I think part of it is um the growth, you know, we need smart growth. We need that for businesses, we need that for our schools. Um recreational wise, uh I proposed last year uh an idea of bringing in private entities to uh bring a safe place for kids to ride their bikes down in Marine Park that uh you know, it it's been proven the Port of Bellingham has something like that. Um it generates a ton of revenue uh over the last few years. Um and I think it would be a great opportunity to look at things like that and and open that up as well as the ball fields, park line, uh pipeline fields. Uh I was talking to the former superintendent of the school district, and you know, they they had money that they wanted to spend out of their school levy. Um and I proposed a different idea with a private partnership from uh a business that would do that, like they have done in Ferndale and and Linden. I think that's kind of catalyst projects that um get the recreation we need and and kind of give the city hope.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Um we're now at the point where you're gonna uh have a chance to make your closing statements. Um the uh you have one minute for those closing statements. And uh then I have some last bit of items to share after that. So for the closing statements, let's go ahead and start with you, Jiggy.
Yeah, so um my vision is uh a city where every resident feels heard, valued and supported. Together, we will strengthen public safety, invest in smart growth, protection of our neighborhoods and create opportunities for families and businesses to thrive. And I think it kind of takes um input from all of those, right? The city, um the private businesses, the school district, the kids, we need more input for for the youth. Um a lot of these city council meetings that I go to and and open house that I go to, um it's the older generations and and some parents. We don't even really have much input from the parents on what is needed. But in our twenty-year plan, who's gonna be here? And, you know, we really need to start asking our kids and the families of our community, what do they want?
Thank you, Jiggy. Eric.
Okay, thank you. So the city of Blaine needs money to pay for things like any city in the country does. Paying for the most necessary infrastructure items, such as updated electrical, electrical systems and provisions for clean drinking water requires money. Other things include paying for general maintenance items like filling potholes and quality of life items like, such as building park benches. Some items are more necessary than others and require prioritizing based on maximizing the greatest benefit to the greatest number of citizens. The real trick is to ensure that we as a city can raise enough money to pay for the things we need, but not by compromising long-term city assets, such as our beautiful marine views and clean water for the benefit of short-term gain. The litmus test for any decision to undertake a major change to the city is this. If a ma- majority of Blaine citizens are going to experience a long-term benefit from the change or project, then undertake it. If not, then don't.
Eric, thank you. Uh let's go next to Isaac, closing statement.
I didn't write anything down, so I'm gonna wing it. Um so as I've gone through this process of campaigning, running for office, um I have just been increasingly impressed with everybody who lives in this town. How many people care so much about making it a better place, even looking at this forum right now, right? We've got a ton of good ideas. People are really energized, trying to get into office, trying to say, hey, I wanna get back. I wanna join the council and do what I can to help people um live in the city, to show it like the world how amazing the city can be, right? Um so I'm, I'm just, I'm really excited about this opportunity and I'm excited to see everybody kind of get together as a community. Um I think that ties into communication like Eric was, Eric was talking about at the beginning, right? Like, we've got a ton of people who are very motivated. Um city council is seven people, but Blaine is six thousand people. We need to have a ton of voices telling us, this is what we want, this is how we wanna do things, let's get stuff done.
Thank you, Isaac. And Sakwan, you get the final word here.
Oh, I've been doing business in Blaine from last twenty-five years. And what worked for me, the business when I took over was dead with the advertisement across the, across the border. And I spent more than hundred thousand dollar on the ad- advertisement. That's only me spend that money to advertise across the border and draw more people, which made the whole town busy, not just me, the whole town. And uh whenever I do, it's always happened with the ad. And you have to advertise what you have. We need to advertise what we have for tourism and anything else, you know, we have to tell the people that what we have, so they come. Otherwise, you know, uh people don't come. That's my, my strategy, how I made the business, how I made the town, town busy.
Thank you, Sakwan. Thank you very much. So on behalf of the League of Women Voters, I thank each of you uh for being here today and for your interest in running for public office. Uh voters can find more information about the candidates online in the voter pamphlet mailed by the Watcombe County Auditor's Office. Important information, ballots will be mailed on October fifteenth. Your ballot must be but postmarked or in a ballot box before eight P M on Tuesday, November fourth. Please remember to sign the ballot envelope. And uh if you're mailing it by postal service, we recommend mailing it early, get it in a few days early. Um voter registration information, including change of address and printing lost ballots, is available at votewa.gov, V O T E W A dot G O V. Thank you all very, very much. You have been a great and wonderfully respectful and and uh really addressed the question. So thank you all very much for being here.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Thanks for the interview.